The order, I think I'm correct.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
This is our annual meeting, and it is a meeting of the residents of Casco Township, not the elected board. Any resident 18 years or older may vote. However, any matters are justified by the rate.
Approve agenda.
We're all residents.
And we're all residents up here, not our elected board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the March 12th.
Approve agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I get to vote on this these days.
Yes, you do. So that'd be five ayes. And zero nays. Motion carries. Okay. Who we might allow to approve the minutes of March 12th, 2019?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 12th, 2019, Casco Township Annual Meeting.
I'll support.
Ordered by Ms. Loper? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes. No nays. Motion carries. Okay. Moving right along to item number one, officials' salaries. First on the list would be Resolution 2020-02, clerk's salary.
And you're just approving the salary because you've already adopted the resolution?
Okay. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-02. That's for the clerk's salary. And it'd be the amount of $28,551 per year.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes. Zero nays. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-03 for the treasurer's salary of the amount of $28,551 per year.
I'll support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes. Zero nays. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the trustee's salary in the amount of $846 per year, $82 per diem.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Yeah, you boys can all vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. Five ayes. Motion carries.
If it were to have been mine, I would have definitely included that.
Right. Advice first.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-05 supervisor's salary at annual rate of $28,551 per year.
Support.
Support. Well, I think Colleen was first, right? Whatever. Okay, I'll give it to her. I don't get to see down.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes. Ayes. Zero nays. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a note, just for the record, that this is another year where the salaries for all of the township elected officials has remained the same.
Okay. I'm gonna just make that. You made it, but you commented.
Yeah, just a comment.
At this time, we will take any matters or concerns for the residents. Any of you have any concerns? Since we have nobody in the audience.
Any concerns I have? Well, Bill and I were up at the county road commission meeting.
That's on the next one. Yep, that's on the next one.
We'll talk about it then.
Glad you're gonna cover that.
Yeah. Well, if there are none, then we're up for a German out there in your meeting.
I'll so move to you.
Support.
All right. Motion by Ms. Loper. Who is this ordered by?
Dan.
Who is ordered by Dan?
And it is 7:06, I think. Well, that's gotta be a record.
Didn't they used to have them on Saturday mornings, didn't they?
Yeah.
So we can't vote. Once in a while, we even brought coffee and doughnuts.
Were they well attended?
Oh, yeah.
Olive. Olive paper. Aye. Five ayes. No nays. Motion carries.
What were people mad about? Everything?
So the regular meeting started 7:07.
Martin Paul?
No.
Who's oldest? Further back?
Karen. And after, at the end, Mark, there was always an air of unrest and unruliness with certain people, with certain, with certain people. Which is why we stop serving coffee in hotels.
I'm gonna call the regular Casco Township meeting to order it. 7:07. You've already did its pledges to the region. Approve agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes.
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
Sorry about that now. Four ayes. No nays. Motion carries. Okay. Next up on the agenda is approved minutes of regular meeting to state February 11th, 2020.
So moved.
I'll support.
I'm gonna, I wasn't here, so I'm gonna go please myself. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
One abstain?
Yeah, one abstain. One abstention. Okay. Next on the agenda is our financial report.
We began the month with $357,274.88. We had taken in receipts of $84,630.51. And we've made disbursements in the amount of $26,507.33. Leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $415, no, four, four hundred thousand. I'm grasping for numbers. My brain is tired. We do not yet have the checking interest and the service charge because it's just too early in the month to get that. So I will add it to, I will either amend this and give you the amended copy in April and we'll go on from there. Or I'll give you two months at one time. We'll just see how that pans out.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes. No nays. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is an invitation from Lenox EMS. Invited to an employee recognition dinner is to be held on April 4th at Manyachi's Baywood Center in Richmond. It's from 5:30 to 10:00. The orders are from 6:30 to 7:30. Dinner will be served at 7:30. It says casual attire. Anyone who wants to attend. Doesn't say if.
What is the cost of this?
I don't know. Doesn't say, 'cause you'd have to call and tell me that. But I imagine if he underspoke.
Should I make a notation if there's a cost, the township will reverse that.
Do you need a motion?
No, we didn't before the MTA thing. Want to, there's a cost, the township will reverse that.
Oh, that we didn't need the motion on, if we're gonna pay the cost.
Yeah, we don't know that. Could be.
We didn't do it for the MTA.
Could be, 'cause we had sponsored by vendors.
Yeah, that might be. Okay. So we'll find out.
We'll just make that note.
All right. At this time, I'm gonna close the regular meeting. It is 7:13.
You're gonna open the public hearing now?
No, but I am gonna close the regular meeting first.
Open the.
And then open the budget.
That's fine. So we're gonna close.
You gotta close one meeting to open the other. That's all.
I looked at last year's minutes. So we're closing at what time?
7:13.
13.
And then I'm gonna open the budget here.
When?
Now.
At 7:13.
7:13.
7:13.
Or 7:14.
Whatever. It's all in one thing. Okey-dokey.
Has everybody looked at the budget? You got any questions?
That's amazing on how much the state revenue sharing has dropped through the years. I remember it used to be between three quarters, over three quarters of our revenue.
Yes.
Really. I wonder why we had to go from no.
And, and we used to get, what was the other one we used to get?
Constitutional.
Yeah. Yeah, we used to get another one too.
No, they, we still got the constitutional revenue sharing. The statutory, that was added up.
Statutory. Two different levels of funding.
And that's why we need a road millage.
Yes.
And thank goodness for our Comcast. This company does that stuff. Okay. Any questions anywhere?
Where does the Comcast revenue come in? Is it under rents and?
And royalties.
And royalties.
I see. Gotcha.
Yeah. Where's the money from then?
Really, it's not that much different than last year, was it?
No. No, actually, it was really close to.
But the supervisor says, all things considered, we may be able to put another $70,000 to $100,000 in the bank in the CD. So we'll see. We'll get his advice on that. But he's.
We need a few things done to this hall.
Well, yes, you're right about that.
We really should do something inside.
Yeah, I agree.
I do too.
The floor.
It needs refinishing.
Yes. I mean, look at the ceiling.
I would like to see the fuss.
Perhaps.
Yeah, or else I'd like to see the ceiling removed.
I'd like to see what's up there, would you?
Yeah. We could get LED lights that match, like mimic the old style lights.
Oh, wouldn't that be wonderful?
Yeah.
Yes. So that is something to consider and before the board.
Let him go.
All right. Maybe he can help with the election.
Who? The flies? Lovely. All right.
But I have no further questions on the budget.
If there are no more questions, then.
We'll close the public hearing.
Do I have to do my motions?
No, you could just.
The budget amendments?
There are no, that's next. That's on the agenda further down. Write it down.
Okay.
No, we don't need a motion. You just need to close them.
All right, I am gonna.
What time you close them?
Close the open hearing.
I'm closing.
Public hearing.
Yeah. I'm closing the public hearing.
At?
At 7:15. Thank you.
You know what? I do have a motion set up. So yes, and I stand.
Aye. Okay. I kinda thought I did.
I apologize.
Do I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Stephen, Dan.
To close the public hearing.
Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes. Zero nays. Motion carries. Okay. Now, we need to approve the budget for 2020 and 2021.
I make a motion that the 2020 to 2021 budget be approved.
Support.
Yeah. And I think I got to set up.
Not critical, no. No prior ownership here.
Okay. Road call vote? Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat? Yes? And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is our network computers contract. Again, this year, it has stayed at $3,000, which.
How is that we adopt the proposal for the network contract in the amount of $3,000?
Okay.
I'll support that.
Do I need to say more about the duration?
It's for a one-year contract.
One-year contract beginning on.
Okay, one year, okay.
When does it begin and when does it end?
I think April 1st to March 31st.
Okay, so.
412.
As proposed.
331, 2021.
Okay. And it's supposed to be the road call vote. Who supported it?
I do. Or I moved it.
Joe supported it. Yeah, we need road call. Okay. Road call. Colleen?
Yes.
Pat? Yes? Joe?
Yes.
And Dan? All right. Now worry about the budget. Amendment. Can you want me to read them all along, or can you just read them?
No, I can just read them. I can just look at them.
I'm taking them out of the used accounts. Bill just gave me a list of accounts to take them out of them. I just listed them as he gave them to me. What I'll do is, once I get to the $29,592.50, then I'll just.
Like the overhead lights, that's because we went to those new LED projections.
Because we had to buy them. Yeah. But in the long run, it will be safe.
Oh, yeah.
In safety as well as.
And again, I will say, I am so happy to have the one there right corner. So.
Oh, yeah, the one there on.
Mirror and the Meisner Road. There was never a light there.
So you remove the $29,950 from these various accounts.
Yes. Are there any questions on the amendments? No? Then I make a motion that we approve the budget adjustments.
You making a motion, Patty?
Yes, I am.
As presented. Support.
As presented. And you're supporting Joe? Excuse me, Dan? I'm sorry. And then we'll need a road call vote.
That's a road call.
I'm not sorry. Should we have said the total number of?
She did. I did. $29,592.50. That's fine.
$592.50, right?
Fifty, right. Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat? Yes. And Colleen? Yes. Motion carries. All right. Aerial agreement. I wasn't too sure what this was, but this is something that Shelley uses quite a bit, I'm thinking.
For assessing.
For assessing. So I went to her for it. And since we missed the other amount, the three-inch one, we're going for the six-inch one. And it comes to $16,9255.
So this, okay, $16.
$92.55. Or this is for aerial shots.
It's really impressive what they can do.
Yeah.
And I went to their.
$1,699.
What'd you think I meant, $16,000? No, no. $1,692.55.
And this helps Shelley with her assessment.
Yes. Okay. So, okay. I make a motion to approve the aerial estimate and agreement upgrade.
Support.
Support. I would note also, I believe that the county puts half the bill we put.
Yeah, they are doing half of it.
So it's really quite, quite a good.
It's a great tool.
And reasonable in cost. And if you would see what they do with the 3D, with the projections, that they can do not only just three-inch, which is unbelievable. But they can do an oblique view of all of the buildings and everything in the township. Which is in some ways problematic because you can see the entrances and exits of buildings and windows with such clarity. It's hard to believe that they can do that. We're not doing three-inch, not the oblique, but what they, their capabilities are really phenomenal. With the firm that they hired.
Okay. Colleen?
Yes.
Pat? Yes? Joey? I mean, Joe?
Yes.
Dan? I'm just saying. Okay. Road commission meeting that you guys went to.
Yeah, it was, I don't know, actually, it was pretty quiet for us this year. The big things in the, now that we have Meisner Road paved, the county is redoing the older portions of it. They're starting the China Township. They're doing two miles a year. And that's what I told them. Now the new portion and the old portion, you know, the one.
They had needs to be taken care of.
So they're working their way westward on that. The Palms Road, Belver Bridge there will be replaced, the deck portion of it, next year. It was, when it was redone in 1987, and they used a type of thing, it was state-of-the-art back then. It wouldn't have worked out well if it was down out southwestern. That was fine if, when there was no freezing and thawing. Well, water collected in there. It caused it and raised havoc with the cement and the underlying steel. So that has to go. Also, they're gonna, at the same time, replace the Belver Bridge there on Grash and Columbus Township. That was put in 1929.
Oh.
Yeah. So that bridge lasted three times longer than the.
Oh, my gosh. What they used on that bridge then?
Steel beams underneath it.
We have the second largest number of bridges in Central County than any other county in state.
Yeah.
There's a lot of 200 and some bridges.
What's that?
Is the configuration going to remain the same on that bridge, or are they going to kind of duplicate what they did on?
Secur Highway?
Yeah.
I don't know. That's a good question. I brought up, we had that one resident had concern there.
About, can I refer him?
Yeah. And I said, they said they have to look into that when they.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up.
What's the Palm Road going?
And the county's looking after a yard right off 94 there on Palms Road. They had, I didn't know they had 18 acres in there.
Yeah, but a lot of it's welllands.
They're looking at putting in a warehouse and possibly assault on it.
Yeah.
Oh.
We told them that we didn't have any problems with that. It'll make it better service for us and closer to us.
Cool.
So, yeah, that's what I'm gonna do then. So anything?
Yeah, there's a, you know, we've been concerned about this intersection at County Line in 26 mile. We got a little more detail about what they're planning. They don't have enough money to make extra lanes and so on. But they're gonna do some major improvements on the way the signal works with left turn signals. As well as detectors that'll sense how the traffic flow is and adjust the signal so that there's a better flow through that intersection. So I'm pretty optimistic that it'll make an improvement because that intersection remains scary.
Did you, did you get any clue as to what they are now excavating at that area and building?
No, I did not. I don't know if it's the county that's doing.
I don't know. I'm sure it's private.
You mean on the southeast corner?
On the Chesterfield Township side.
I remember.
Yeah, there is something. Yeah, there is something on there. No, I didn't think to ask them that.
Maybe a wall. So Dan and Joe and Bill attended that meeting, right?
Oh, and another thing, talking about intersections, even though it's on Casco, it's near it, they're gonna be putting in a traffic circle there at Palms and Grash.
Oh.
A roundabout?
Yeah, a roundabout. Because that is a dangerous intersection because it's at an angle?
Yes, it is.
A lot of people don't like roundabouts, but when you really think about it.
Well, at least.
They prevent accidents, the T-bone accidents that we've seen, like at County Line in 26, there were people really get killed. Side swipes are not so.
Yeah, right. So this is Grash and Palms.
Took me a while to get used to roundabouts, but.
Like in Japan's, they call them rotaries. Actually, technically, in the United States, you call them traffic circles.
Oh, call them what?
Traffic circles.
Traffic circles.
That would be a roundabout. That's what the Beatles called it, and that's what it is. There you go.
And they're more popular than the Beatles.
I should, I wanted to make a note about the road millage. The road millage is really important to us tremendously. It's also important to the whole county because the return on the road millage from federal matching funds, I believe, is like $1. In millage, we get $3 federal, something. It's a very large amount relatively speaking, that returns. So the millage is important, not just for the money that's paid in, but for the money that it yields from matching funds, which is tremendous. And we hope everybody will understand that and carry on vote for this millage. It's not an increase. It's just a going-forward millage. Same with the school millage. It's not an increase. It's just keeping the current school millage in place like we hopefully did the last time.
Indeed.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the I-69 grant at Hagan. Which, this has to do with our parks and rec. It's a grant if they're applying for, and it, the amount requested, they're requesting $2,000?
No, is Pam Blau gonna be writing the grant?
Yes.
I hope so. Right, but I think you have to get this all done. Do the planning commission first.
First, so.
Okay, we have to approve the site plan before we approve this?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
Are targeted for the I-65. I prepared a draft application for you to review and consider, which is all here. So.
We have to approve the site plan, did we get?
We can confirm all that with her tomorrow if we need.
So this is just a heads up?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Just the heads up.
Steps that we have to take.
When's the deadline?
First of May.
May 1st.
So. Between Colleen and I, we can touch base with her tomorrow to confirm that the site plan must be approved by the planning commission before we can go.
All right. Do we have to okay this or anything?
No, it's just an NYI, I believe.
Well, okay.
This doesn't, if this doesn't pass approval, it doesn't move forward.
Yeah, because she's got the site plan attached.
And if it doesn't move forward, then we don't have a site plan for the park, and that, the grant seems not all of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Should we make a motion to approve this proposal contingent on the approval of the site plan?
Yes, we could probably do that.
Let's do that then.
All right, so we're gonna make a motion.
Approve the funds for the preparation of the grant proposal contingent on the approval of the site plan.
Do we know how much?
Two thousand dollars is what it is.
I, I spoke, wait a minute.
The grant is for two thousand.
The grant is for two thousand dollars.
I don't know what she's going to charge us to prepare, to write the grant.
I misunderstood that then.
The application.
That's what.
The, the grant itself is up to two thousand dollars.
Right. Because when I first read it, I thought she was asking for two thousand.
Yeah.
But this is a mini-grant.
Yeah.
For two thousand.
Right, right, sure.
To approve preparation of grant application.
With a two-thousand-dollar mini-grant.
Contingent.
One of the things that we might be able to get is the large sign.
Approved.
The only caveat on that is that sometimes, if you get the grant for something, they want to see that thing in place, and we might not be further far enough along on the site plan to be able to place a sign where we want it.
Yeah.
It's, but I guess we can work that out a little.
It's gonna take at least two meetings, if all goes well, to approve that site plan.
Well, I hope that, I hope that what is being, you know, presented.
All right.
Is adequate.
So can I just read this motion back to Dan to make sure I have it accurate? You're making a motion to approve preparation of the grant application contingent on approved site plan by the planning commission.
Yeah, and I would put mini-grant, just to make it, because not to get everybody too excited about it.
Mini-grant.
I'm hoping that by April, she'll be able to do some more aggressive.
Aggressive.
And larger grant applications, because that's what we're hoping that can happen.
That there again.
To really do something with the park.
We can't really do that until we have the first.
A site plan, right.
Site plan.
So that's, it's all really needs to get done.
I'll support that.
Do you want a roll call vote, or just a?
Yeah, there's no money involved, so just a, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We're not spending.
We don't know, we don't know what they.
All right, so that was heard by Dan. All right, next on the agenda is MTA endorsement and reimbursement. When we went to that dinner, I took my deputy with me and I.
Oh, you guys went to it?
Yes, we did, we all, and I would like to be reimbursed for her.
I think we reimbursed Patty in there.
I'll support her.
That's the MTA dinner.
Right, yes, it is.
Good, so Casco did have representatives?
Yes, we did. We had three of us.
I was worried about that.
Joe, you supported it?
Yeah. I'm on the strategic planning team at my church, and I can't miss these teams.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
I'm for thirty dollars, I don't think so.
No, I don't either. Motion carries. Okay, we're up to full business, and that would be the site plan that Ms. Blau sent over to us, application for the park.
You received a site plan.
To be sent over to the planning commission. She has forwarded them over to John Money.
For her associate, Mr. White.
I meant David White has, has sent the plans over to John Money, per, I believe, Bill's request.
Yeah.
And to let us know if he had any questions. As we know, Bill hasn't seen them yet, but I'm sure he'll see them.
John is good.
John Money is excellent.
Yeah, whenever, we, he, a client applicant comes before us, and they have John as their site project manager. We rarely have.
Any problems?
If there are, usually select John, who takes care of all.
All right.
To. And Mr. White, in his communication, has said that he's mailing the ten copies required by the planning commission via snail mail. We haven't gotten them yet, but this was the email we got from him yesterday, so.
Do you, do we need to do any, nothing on this?
This is just. Once we did the packet, it's gonna go.
Just an update.
For the March, hopefully, the March seventeenth, planning commission, if you have.
Okay, we're up to payment of the bills.
Okay. I, I make a motion to approve the bill that submitted.
Support. All in favor?
Roll call on this one.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, right, okay.
I'm sorry.
Dan, yes.
Dan?
Joe?
Yes.
Patty, yes. And Colleen, yes. Citizen, Thomas, or Karna?
No, no citizen.
I have.
Felicia, man, are you from Casco?
No.
I'm not. Armada.
You're Bill's son.
Yes.
All right.
You can go first.
I have, I have a question for you, Joe, planning commission. Tell to me the, not the statute, but the reasoning behind the idea that property is being bought in Casco for the production of marijuana. It is, it is homes or farms or buildings in residential and agricultural zones are being bought. The state has usurped our zoning rights to properties, that these can be placed anywhere.
Not that I know of.
It's not a planning permission matter.
No.
They have not a planning permission matter.
So you have, you have had no input.
No.
So it is a state.
Yeah. If it's medical marijuana, as long as it's in, in codes, they can't do that.
And I'm just, and I'm not, I don't have a problem with the medical marijuana. I have a problem with the state usurping our zoning rights.
Well.
That's what my problem.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, for the, I mean, still, they can't farm per se.
They're not farming.
They're growing in their side.
But the thing about it is, the houses are sitting empty, or at best will be used as offices. In a house, yeah. In zoning.
This is actually happening, or is this?
We just did our third one today.
Yes.
I, I would consult with Steve Caston on this, 'cause he represents Lennox Township.
Bill's already talked to Archer.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just thinking, I'm asking that.
Can't stop.
Nothing has, nothing has come before the planning commission under the guise of this.
It's like schools. Remember when we did the school?
Yes.
We had no, other than give it a street address and approve the water, we had no, none.
And when we were at the MTA dinner, the same idea is coming down with gravitas, being placed in townships, regardless of what the zoning is, where they seem fit.
Very short. I know what the actual number is, but it's, it's very distressing.
Well, people, people put, put a whole barn without a house, and this is what you get.
We issued our third.
Yeah, well, you can't, we can't, you have to have a residence before you put up a.
Well, this instance, for whatever reason.
That's, that's my only, that's my only.
Yeah, I have a problem with the state doing that too, but that's the end thing, the marijuana.
That's just.
I don't get it.
Well, the only thing, if I may interject, because Bill and I are working on these together.
Yeah.
There's a zoning compliance document that we prepared, that needs to be recorded at the county. In the last instance, that we prepared one today, and it's on its way to be recorded tomorrow, the gentleman is going to be doing some construction in the building, so he will need a building permit. There's no water at the site, and so he's gonna have to really follow some state regulations that Kelly, our plumbing inspector, provided to the office today. Bill has not seen any of these things, but Kelly is adamant that even though we may not be able to stop them, there are state rules and regulations about electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits that these people must abide by. And he sent me the information today, I will get it to Bill as soon as he is able to come back to the office, and Kelly is gonna have a meeting with Bob, our electrical inspector, with Rowland, and himself, and with Bill. He says, because we may not be able to stop them, but we can't give them free rein. The first, the first one we allowed, they ran six hundred amps in the building.
Yeah. Bob is an expert, because he's.
That's it. Well, Bob called me this morning on the first one, that was issued last September, was the first one that we dealt with, and he asked me, what are they doing? And I said, all we know is that we gave them the permit, so he is going to go back and knock on the door and ask what's going on. So, you know, we may not be able to stop them, but Kelly said they can't just go in there and put electrical, or mechanical, or plumbing with no oversight.
I just, I find that troubling.
And that just kind of came to light today.
Yeah, I find that troubling, that the state is.
Co-opting us.
Yeah.
It's the rush for all this money that's involved.
And that's right, but, but what is it going to do to individual neighborhoods?
Well, that's Kelly's, one of Kelly's major concerns, is he said, there has to be a contained ventilation system, so that those odors don't permeate into the, and, yeah, we have the instance, which is right next door to one of our residents.
Yes.
So Kelly, I think, is gonna act on this as quickly as he can.
Yeah.
But like I said, Bill wasn't here today, so he doesn't have the information, but Kelly will follow up with Bill.
Um, yeah, well, and the other thing on schools, that was, that it was the community's own fault, because communities tried to zone out schools, so the state took any kind of authority away from local communities.
But that, but that's a shame, because in the sixties, in my hometown, they incorporated schools within park settings within subdivisions, and each subdivision, you know, or, or one or two subdivisions have its own park, in which was a school, and everyone was within walking distance at that time through a park or whatever, and the schools, by and large, in the sixties, in Trenton anyway, were paid for, a lot of, a lot of it was paid for by the contractors building the subdivisions, and that seems to me a very nice hand in glove way to get schools funded, you know? But I just wanted to, to bring it up, I know you're aware of it, but when they mentioned that this was also happening with another industry, the gravel industry at MTA, and to contact your representative about this, I just thought, what, what is this, you know?
But they're allowed to, since it's under block and key.
We were, we, one of the properties there on Marine City Highway was the one that, half of it, it's one of the D-plots, he requested for the zoning to include all of it, and there were some of the, the neighbors were concerned, and I, you know, some of them, few of them who lived in Ag, I says, you guys are worried about a big industrial park. If something went back there, it'd be low industrial, closed in the building, what's more likely for your area is you could have some big ag industry come, flash big money, buy a bunch of parcels, and put in like a big chicken operation or a hog hotel. What would you rather have?
Yeah.
And not far from I-94, it's happened in areas, and that's zoned agriculture. We could do this, stop it.
That's too bad.
I have one last item.
Sure.
I'd like to just make a comment on the COVID-19 infection that is, that may become epidemic in this country, if it hasn't already. There are three resources on, two on YouTube and one on the internet that are useful in finding out information about personal hygiene and protection, and what is and isn't, and does and does not have efficacy. One is Dr. John Campbell, C-A-M-P-B-E-L-L. He's a British nursing professor who gives lectures on many, many things, but also has been tracking this epidemic daily, and gives a daily update on statistics coming in from here and there, and whether they're credible or not. The other one is called MedCram, and it's a medically, medically oriented lecture from an emergency medicine physician, and there are many lectures he provides on the internet, there's probably a hundred, hundreds, but in particular on the COVID-19 virus, almost every day he has another lecture, giving background and understanding of what's really going on, and how to deal with it and protect it, and what's, you know, what, what's happening. The other one is called.
Could I interrupt you? Could you give me the, the correct spelling of the second one? Med?
Cram. Med dot, med dot cram.
C-R-A-M.
But it's on, it can be gotten on the, on YouTube.
Yes, okay.
And the other one is called World, Worldometer, W-O-R-L-D-O-M-E-T-E-R.
Thank you.
And you can get statistics very readily about what's happening, what the data that's coming in from the World Health Organization on cases, occurrences, fatality, mortality rates, infection rates, seriousness with respect to different age groups. In other words, if you're over eighty, it's, can be extraordinarily serious. Current figure, fifteen percent of those that are infected over eighty may have fatality rate of that, that high, eighty percent for someone like, eight percent for someone like me. It's very high, and these are World Health Organization estimates, so they're all reputable, to my mind, reputable sources, it's not rumor, it's mostly just fact.
Right.
It's interesting, and this is going to be, I feel, from looking at these various sites, a serious problem in the future, in how to have good hygiene, and how you deal with social distancing, and all of those issues which are now occurring in Washington. They have, I think, seventeen, nineteen public health, nineteen emergency responders are in quarantine because they were exposed in transporting patients, firefighters in particular, seventeen, I think, and they have nine deaths already, and they think that the infection has been expanding for the last six weeks, at least, because they just found it, and it's community-based, and they've tracked the, the, the way the virus has evolved, mutated, and it's a similar virus that's now being detected, that was detected some time ago, and they think that it's been spreading, and they don't know how many cases there really are, because only, testing on a large scale is only now becoming available next week, and some predictions say that this week it will be hundreds, and next week it will be thousands of patients. So I think it's important to look into.
And I'll put these.
To understand these things as they're going on, and not, not to be alarmist, not to buy all kinds of masks that aren't necessary, or other things, and not to have panic buying, but it's a serious situation that's developing.
The Japanese are considered even the land, are postponing the Olympics.
They've closed, all of their schools, all of their schools in Japan are closed, universities and schools. Even, even Saudi Arabia has stopped, has stopped the hajj, which is a major Muslim pilgrimage, and to have that happen in Saudi Arabia is just incredible, and that's really serious. Iran, I feel, it's out of control.
Some of them.
Seven officials, one has died, there's, one is infected, actually a close advisor to Khomeini, so it's, it's a really, it's gripping lots of places.
Yes, it is.
All right. And also remember to vote next. And also remember to vote next Tuesday.
Definitely.
Yeah.
For the road millage.
Yes.
For the road millage. East China Schools is running a millage.
Richmond?
Richmond's running a millage.
Yeah, Richmond, that's that for the intermediate school district.
Yes, yes. Intermediate schools, East China's for the East China School District, Anchor Bay School District. Everybody's got money up, um, so come in and ask for the right ballot.
Yep.
And you will get it. The collection of taxes has now ceased. The only thing I will be accepting is postmark. Everything's going up to the county by next Monday, so hold your check. If you haven't paid your taxes, just hold it and the county will let you know.
Thank you. Okay, we're up for a term.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. That is a good meeting. I put that in the meeting, that's. No, really, we appreciate you doing that.
Yeah.
Don't go away, I need you to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most in care.